Morning, everyone, and welcome to this morning's executive meeting. Obviously, we haven't got many papers this morning, so hopefully we'll move along and it'll be a good discussion. So apologies for absence. Have we got any apologies for absence? Just got the... Rachel, apologies for absence.
Thank you. We have apologies from councillor Hill. We also have apologies from Andy Cuthbertson, executive director in place, but we have Nicole Hilton, assistant director of communities here in his place.
Thank you for that. We'll... First item on the agenda is agreement of the minutes of the meeting in October. Has anybody got any issues or amendments to make to those minutes? No? Is everybody in agreement these are a true and correct record of the minutes? Thank you. Sorry. Are there any announcements as well? Oh, two hands. Thank you. I'd just like to welcome Martin Samuels, our new executive director for adult care and community wellbeing. It's really good to have him here and it's his third day and he's still looking well, so that's really good. And he's smiling. That's a good thing. Councillor Day.
Thank you and welcome, Martin. I'm sure you'll enjoy your time here at the county council. I just want a quick update on Storm Babette, which, as everyone knows, was a very major event, not just localized but for the whole of Lincolnshire. As of yesterday, we have confirmed 583 properties were flooded internally, including four of our four school sites. There have been hundreds and hundreds of near misses, i.e. water getting into people's garden, nearly up to the house, et cetera. So it's quite clearly a substantial event. It's going to put some enormous pressure in terms of how we deal with the section 19 work, and that will be a matter for further discussion. The 583 will not be the final number quite clearly. I think most people will appreciate that if someone's got water in their home, their first response is going to be dealing with that issue, making sure that they can live and function before they actually call us to tell us that their property was flooded. So I think the number will be considerably higher when we actually get to the end of it. We've still got some flooding stuff going on in various parts of the county, which is causing substantial local issues. And I suspect it's going to take us a considerable period of time to actually resolve some of this. And we also have to hope and pray that we don't get even further heavy rainfalls now that the ground is totally saturated. So these are going to be a challenging winter, I think. And just reminds us all that we need to be much more careful about where we build in the future and how we build if we're going to avoid this becoming an even bigger problem for future generations. Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, both of you. So no more announcements. We'll move on to the first item on the agenda, which is highways, it's the works professional services and traffic signals contract extension. Councillor Davis, do you want to?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. As colleagues will be aware, this is the substantive contract that runs most of the authority's highway works through it. It's broken into three sections. A on-the-ground shovel-in-hand section, as you might call it, from the construction phase that's currently with Balfour Beattie, a professional services contract that's with WSP, and a signals contract currently with Colas. We're proposing a mixed response in terms of reprocurement and contract extensions that reflects, I think, the best requirements and needs of the existing contract and for what we need here in Lincolnshire. Some bits have worked well, some other bits haven't worked as well. So I think the flexibility of the contract structure we've got in place is really useful. I think I'm going to pass on to the two young gentlemen behind me to go through in some more detail.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Councillor Davis. So on the 1st of April 2020, Lincolnshire County Council commenced the delivery of the highway service using three new contract arrangements. They were the Highway Works, which is delivered by Balfour Beattie. The annual throughput of that contract is somewhere between 60 and 65 million pounds per annum. The professional services contract, with the current provider being WSP, where the throughput's around 2 to 3 million pounds per annum. And the traffic signals term service contract is the provider is Colas. The annual throughput of that contract is about 1.5 million per annum. So the contracts were awarded on an initial six-year term with the potential to extend for a maximum of a further six years. The extensions can be awarded individually or in blocks. So a specific contract refresh clause was included within the contract. That enables a full review of the service, looking backwards and forwards. That process commenced in spring 2022, where we set out an action plan and we took a number of decisions about how we think the service could improve going forward. At that moment in time, we decided to defer the decision, and we've been working on that with the providers for the last 12 months. So during spring 2023, we decided to recommence that process. So we took a further review that was carried out to test the improvements that we've been making to date and against the action plans to consider any further issues that may have emerged over that time period. We're coming to the end of that phase now, and this is the recommendation that we're making as officers today. A key point that I think is worth noting is that the extension clauses within the contract require the agreement of both parties to any proposed extension, so it isn't a mandated clause. Within 2.1 of the main document, you'll see the contract performance to date. And as you can see, there's a general upward trend across all three contracts. We also monitor ourselves as the client, and we have an overarching key performance indicators. So they range from April 2022... 20, sorry, April 2020 until now. And as you'll see, we've sort of progressed, worked through an extremely difficult time during the pandemic, working with some problems with availability of material. And the upward trend is obvious there from the graph. Our typical level of performance that we're looking for is anything above 70%. That would sort of warrant an extension. So I now individually talk through each of the contracts and the recommendation we're making within the paper. So I'll start with the Highway Works one, which is delivered by Balfour Beattie. In its current format, the financial position of the contract isn't viable ultimately. The pain on the contract is somewhere between 8 and 10%, so it's loss-making for the provider. So they wouldn't accept an extension on the current terms. We've done a number of benchmarking over this time period to sort of test that position. Obviously, we can see the actual costs of labour, plant materials, so we know that this is real. And we've also compared ourselves with other authorities around the UK. We perceive that we're delivering a good service, and there's a risk to not going back out to the market. If we were to not extend in this position, we're likely to see the contract sort of stagnate for a couple of years, and we're really keen to avoid that. Something that we've noted is the volume of highway work term contracts coming up for renewal in 2026 is significant, probably a saturated market, and there's only a number of providers that do this for an authority the size of Lincolnshire. So we're slightly nervous of going back out to the market in that congested time period. So at that, when we went through the contract refresh process, we decided to take a decision to enter into a negotiated position, and that's what we're presenting today. So in spring 2022 and 23, the contract refresh process focused heavily on both the commercial position of the contract, but also trying to improve service delivery, because that's ultimately what we want to do. It's key areas of focus with the reactive service and the street lighting. Some of the elements that we're digging into there is about productivity, making sure that the gangs are doing as much as we can when we get out onto the network. When we've got those opportunities, road space booked, we're trying to maximize our delivery. We're looking at response times, contractor identified faults, and making sure our traffic management is correct on the network. In terms of the contract duration, something was key for the Highway Works contract is we want to give that time scale that's appropriate to invest in big bits of kit and fleet. There's a number of, probably somewhere in the region of 30 to 40 vehicles that we have on the Balfour Beattie contract. Doing it over a prolonged period allows us to get a more efficient deal ultimately, with larger investment over a longer period of time for those payback periods. So in terms of the negotiated position, we are suggesting that a deed of variation is implemented. We've broken that down into four areas. There are efficiency initiatives that LCC can implement, efficiency initiatives that Balfour Beattie are able to progress over this next time period. We're going to be proposing some price list adjustments and also some improvements in scope. Implementing this package of initiatives will ensure we've got a targeted improvement over the next phase of the contract delivery. We're going to be removing some of the constraints on service delivery. What we didn't want to do here was just adjust the price list to the maximum position. We want to try and improve as much as the service while we've got the opportunity, and we'll be working with Balfour Beattie on the next phase if it's accepted today. We want to make sure the contract remains sustainable for the life of the contract, and a key one for us is maintaining the economic balance in that individual contract that was bid back in 2020. We've got to make sure that in terms of procurement risk, that's appropriate and well thought through. The final bit of the deed of variation is ensuring that the commercial mechanism is implemented to deal with the initiatives. So if they're not implemented through the life of the contract, we're able to adjust that and work with the provider. So I'll quickly run through them in a bit more detail. The deed of variation for the LCC efficiency initiative. So these are things that we think as officers, we're recommended that are good improvements for the service, but they also ease some of that commercial pressure. I'll run through and give some examples of them. One would be safety inspections on our A-road network. So at the moment, we have a number of external framework providers delivering that service away from the term service contract. What we'd like to do is link up better with that work process, trying to co-work on those areas of road space. So when we've got somewhere like the A17 block booked, we might have sometimes six or seven miles of the road space that is less congested than normal. So what we're going to do is go in and do an ad hoc safety inspection and pick up those faults that are at intervention level and near intervention level, and just try and maximize the use of that traffic management in one space. Obviously, that frees up a bit of capacity in terms of Balfour Beattie, the works provider, they're able to go in there and get on with work quicker. Some of the other ones, examples of that are looking to remove some of the restrictions on our lower hierarchies. So at the moment, we did a, during the summer phase of the work off the back of the contract refresh, we did a number of day-in-the-life-of studies, going out with the gangs for the summer period. And we quickly noticed that some of the small works, when we're going in to do a pothole, the time spent setting up traffic management was significant in response to the actual work delivered on site. What we'd like to do is free up some of those restrictions, and we've committed to do that in this next phase of work. The other items I've just quickly run through is the risk-based approach for footway faults. At the moment, we take that approach for Carriageway. We're going to implement that for footways. That will be taken to the, if approved today, it'll be taken to the next highways and transportation scrutiny committee next month. Final one on there is the innovation for footways. We're looking at implementing or widening out our cold recycled biomaterials. That's recycling road planings. Currently do that for the Carriageway. We are working with Balfour Beattie to do that for the footways. It just allows us to progress quicker, and it means that we're able to increase our recycling on the contract. The total value of these initiatives is somewhere in the region of 780,000 pounds per annum. Move now on to the Balfour Beattie initiatives. They're things that Balfour Beattie can just do over this longer period of investment or the contract extension. Stuff like the 45-hour contract working week. The operatives are currently working on a 39-hour week. We'd like to maximize the use of the fleet and plant so that they have a longer working day ultimately. So any new starter on the contract will be now on a 45-hour week. We've done a number of things of late in this area, stuff like a static hotbox at Sturt and Depot. It just allows us to maximize the drive time or the working time of the operatives. Instead of driving out to a batching plant, sometimes out of county, we're able to locate them in one of our depots and maximize the delivery. Final one on there, and I know it's a topic of discussion with councillors, is the contractor identified faults. Through the summer period, we've identified that there's more opportunity than we've done in the contracted date. So this is identifying, self-identifying a fault within 30 metres of our traffic management setup. So that's something that we'll be giving a push for this next phase of work. These initiatives are somewhere in the region of 530,000 pounds per annum. So in addition to that, we will be proposing to adjust the price list. The total adjustment to the price list is somewhere in the region of 1.7 million per annum, and that ultimately will be a budget pressure for the council. We've highlighted that within the medium-term financial plan, but there's obviously an option for the council to just do slightly less of the highway works. But we think it's the right thing to do to make this contract sustainable longer term. We're proposing to make those adjustments in the areas of benchmarking, where we're seeing that the bid position that Balfour Beattie submitted in 2020 is not in line with the rest of the market. So we still perceive that once we've benchmarked, we're still getting better value than other contracts. Those areas of adjustments would be in reactive service, footways, and street lighting. Final bit of the deed of variation is improvements to the scope. We want to maximize what we're doing for the next six-year extension and make sure we get everything we can out of this contract. We're proposing to enhance 21 elements of the scope. A good example of that is the recently launched operational control hub within Lancaster House. That's going to be a contractual requirement going forward with three additional members of staff for the duration of the contract. So in conclusion of the contract refresh process, it's recommended that the Highway Works contract provider, Balfour Beattie, is offered a six-year extension from the 31st of March 2026 to the maximum permitted extension, as advertised in the original procurement document, taking service delivery to the 31st of March 2032. And I move on quickly to the professional services contract, which is WSP. So the highway service needs a top-up option. We like the model that we've got in Lincolnshire. These are normally for positions and roles where they're not fully occupied. So if it's not 100% a service day in, day out, we reach back to WSP for those specialisms. Unlike the Highway Works term service contract, there's limited investment opportunities that present an argument for longer-term extension. They don't have the big purchases of fleet and equipment. So that reason is, we'd like to make that offer on a shorter time scale. That's sort of similar to what the market does for this sector. When we analyze and the rates within the contract, including that wider benchmarking, it clearly demonstrates that the other contract or the contract that we've got continues to deliver good value. The rates within the WSP contract also align with our LCC officer time within our similar trading account technical services partnership. So we think it's a good fit for what we want to achieve at Lincolnshire. So it's therefore recommended that professional services contract provider is offered a two-year extension from the 31st of March 2026, taking service delivery to the 31st of March 2028. So the final one, traffic signals term contract. Colas, when they bid the contract back in 2020, it was an expansion into a new market for them. And it's a market that's quite tight in terms of the number of providers that do it, probably in the region of two or three. Those two or three other providers manufacture their own equipment, and that's something that Colas committed to do in this bid, but have struggled to break into that market. They intended to manufacture a number of key bits of kit, so they're the controllers, signal heads. And sadly, that hasn't come to life today. And I think that's probably linked to other, when they wanted to expand in this area, they wanted to win other contracts of this type. And I think over time, as we're in year four now of the contract, they just haven't had those opportunities to invest because they haven't won elsewhere. Something else we've noticed is a bit of a resilience concern on the contract. We've lost a number of key people from the original bid. And I think within Colas, the wider business, because they haven't got those traffic signal contracts on other authorities, they can't reach back if we lose a couple of key members of staff. I would like to state that the local team delivering the traffic signals contract has been excellent. So we're keen to, if they are willing to two P, they will have the opportunity to move over to a new provider. And as you can see, the performance indicators on contract have been excellent. It's just that the resilience and that longer-term concern needs flagging. And I think that's probably why we've made the hard decision to not extend the traffic signals contract. And we would like to suggest to the executive that we go on a new procurement exercise, which will commence after this decision. So in terms of the next steps, a formal decision obviously making today on the 7th of November, they'll be offered to the partners, which we think we've talked through in enough detail to be in a position to accept now. And then we'd enact those contract changes over the next month or so. So that concludes my update. Any questions, please? Thank you.
Thank you for that. Very good report. And as I say, I really do support this because I know how much we do need maintenance of our roads across county. So any questions for Jonathan, Colin?
Not really a question. I think a well-written report and I think well-presented. And I think it really does address the challenges of the next couple of years. So I'm very happy, like yourself, to support the recommendations in the report.
Any other? Right. Sorry, I am new at this post. If I have to do it again, I'll be much better. Sorry, I forgot councillor Hall, who's going to let us know if there were any scrutiny comments regarding this paper.
Thank you. On the 30th of October 2023, the Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee reached a unanimous decision to support the recommendations that the paper makes to the executive. During the discussion, the committee thoroughly reviewed the report and members' backs to the proposal. We appreciated that the substantial investment proposed was geared towards enhancing performance rather than imposing cutbacks. We have an optimistic outlook for the region's future. Several key points emerged from the committee's discussion. Members expressed concern about the shortage of apprenticeships for local residents and young individuals in high-volume contracts. We felt the contracts of this magnitude should provide more significant opportunities for apprenticeships. In response, officers acknowledged the historical challenges but highlighted recent improvements, particularly in the Balfour Beattie contract, where nine apprentices were involved. Additionally, they mentioned the introduction of care leavers and the implementation of social value volunteering schemes, which had positively impacted the community. While acknowledging the progress, officers recognized the potential for further improvement and committed to strengthening these efforts in the next phase of the works. Committee members voiced some disappointment regarding the need for contract penalties due to performance issues. It was noted that these issues were partly attributed to challenges in retaining and recruiting locally-based staff. We emphasized the importance of training and mentoring junior staff, given the difficulties in recruitment and retention within the sector. We also sought for assurances that current contractor was able to maintain necessary procedures and resilience, whilst the authority would ensure stability in the future. Clarity was requested regarding the percentage of the total contract represented by the 1,785,987 pounds budget pressure and additional cost when renewing the contract for another six years. Furthermore, an explanation was sought about having improvements in service delivery mentioned in paragraph 3.17 would offset this budget pressure. In response, in response, officers explained that the 1,785,987 pounds budget pressure equated to approximately a 3% increase in prices for the Balfour Beattie works contract. Their proposal involved adjusting specific price list items to align with market rates and offsetting the price list increase with various quality improvements to maintain the economic balance of the contract. This adjustment accounted for the offsets and reflected their commitment to delivering a value-for-money service to the residents of Lincolnshire in a sustainable manner. Finally, further clarification was sought regarding the potential costs associated with not renewing the traffic signal terms contract and opting for a new contract, including the financial implications of both scenarios. Officers provided assurances that the procurement exercise for the traffic signal term contract was managed in-house, leveraging the expertise of the LCC central procurement team and the staff on the highways department. They estimated an allocation of between 20,000 to 30,000 pounds for the process, primarily covering staffing time. Whilst acknowledging the commercial and financial risks associated with procurement, they emphasized the recommendation aimed to address concerns about resilience in the traffic signals business. This concludes my presentation to you. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hall. So we'll take questions now. So I've got councillor Corey and then councillor Bootroyd.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you for the report. It was very comprehensive. The comment I was going to make has already been raised by councillor Hall, but this is about apprenticeship opportunities, particularly those for care leavers. I know this was addressed through scrutiny, but I'd like to know from Jonathan if you've got anything to add.
Yeah, in terms of the care leavers on the contract, it's something that we, obviously within the original bid, we had a number of sort of social value commitments. And we think what we've done in the contracted date is improving considerably. In terms of care leavers specifically, in the last year, I think we've had two care leavers join Balfour Beattie, which is fantastic news. I think one is permanently with Balfour Beattie at the moment. One was sort of treated as a work experience trial. We've also got WSP signed now, signed up to be a mentoring candidate. So they're going out to the care leavers, talking them through sort of, you know, day in, day out sort of business and how to progress in that sector. So it's something that we are doing. I think we can do more of it. It's obviously a challenging area sometimes to get them fully embedded. But with the apprentices just generally on the contract, as I said at the scrutiny committee, we've got nine at the moment working for Balfour Beattie. WSP, I failed to mention, have three on a revolving turnaround, so it's something that we're doing more of. Obviously, we can do more within Lincolnshire. We've got significant spend, somewhere in the region of 17 million per annum. So something that we'll be committing to do more of, and I'll work with the partners at our operation on the strategic boards.
Thank you for that. Councillor Bootroyd.
Thank you. It was just on 3.14, the Balfour Beattie efficiency initiatives. It was more about the 45 hours a week. So will that be a change in contracts for the members of staff or will that be? Because if you're on, I can't remember what they, they'd say they're on 37 and a half hours, which is quite typical for tradespeople. So will that difference be paid at basic rate then? Because I just worry about the retention of the staff. Because if you're losing that extra hours as time and a half, I would imagine that would upset quite a few people. So I just wondered for clarity, and I'm pleased to hear Sturt and Bystow will be getting a hotbox because I think that will benefit the villages around Stow and where I live. Thank you.
Sorry, in terms of the question posed, sorry, what, should I remind you what the first part of it was? The contracts. Yes. Yes, sorry. Had a mind blank there. Yeah, they've gone through the process. Balfour Beattie have sort of analyzed. Because we've had sort of a number of iterations of transferring of people either out from the authority or to the next provider, we've got a vast array of different terms and conditions across the contract. What they've tried to do is benchmark with other authorities and make it as an attractive as possible solution. So when we've moved or offering a 45-hour new starter contract, the existing employees have had the opportunity to transfer over to it. They've tried to make it as attractive as possible in terms of pay rates, but obviously not going excessively because we don't want to, obviously in terms of our value-for-money position, we don't want to make it a worse position. So I think the, a large majority of the workforce have shifted. Any new starter is joining on 45 hour, but they have the option to retain their current Ts and Cs if they wish to. So I think what we've had, we haven't had the disruption that you could expect of it's mandated. It'll just transition over time. So something over the next six years, by the end of the 2032, will likely to be in a more consistent picture if and when we go back out to the market, so that a new provider could come in with a sort of a standard Ts and Cs. So we're quite supportive of it because at the moment, we've got a vast array of different conditions.
Not, I suppose I'm looking at the actual little minute detail really. But if you were working with someone that's on the old terms and conditions and you were on the 45 hours, you've got to work the same times and the same patterns. So, you know, there's a bit of a contract, you know, conflict there, isn't there?
Yeah, in relation to that, it is a challenge on contract operationally. What we're doing to counter that is buddying up those 45-hour people so that you don't have that mismatch. If somebody only wants to work a 39-hour week and is staying on those Ts and Cs, they're going to be buddied up with somebody else doing those works. Those that are in that sort of mixed position, and there may be some that we have over the next time period, they're going to be getting overtime in comparison to the standard working hours. But the pay rates and the differences in sort of Ts and Cs will be the benefit of that person who is currently on those conditions. Those that are fully transferred will obviously be buddied up as well. Where we, we can't satisfy all of those scenarios, sometimes it's prep work for the next day or working in the depot improvements so that they can set to work quicker the next day. So we're, the operation with Balfour Beattie, we've talked that through and we're coming at it from a number of different angles. But it is a key point and it is an issue that we are dealing with now.
Thank you for that. Any more questions? Let's see anybody. So the recommendations are set out on pages 13 and 14. Does everybody agree with those? If you want to put our hands up. Bit of exercise. Thank you. Thank you. Now moving on to our second paper, which is the future funding of the Citizens Advice Bureau. I'll hand over to the new executive director to take us through this paper. And, oh, sorry, Sue, did you? And, oh, sorry, Sue, did you want to say something first?
Only very briefly, chairman. Following a very comprehensive review of the Citizens Advice Service, we're now at a point where I'm pleased to be able to bring you this paper today, recommending the continued funding from Lincolnshire County Council. And that further on that, we would actually like to move to a three year agreement because we value, and I'm sure you recognise as well, how much we value this service for, for our residents. So I will now hand over to our director, Martin. Thank you.
Thank you. So as councillor Woolley has, has just set out the sort of core part of this, it's a fairly straightforward recommendation, but I think the, the context is, is quite complex. Those members will be aware, we actually have three separate charities running Citizens Advice across the county. And then a fourth charity, which brings them together in order to facilitate the, the work that they do with the county council. So it's been quite a complex arrangement of, of funding over the years through the, the county council and the district councils collectively, through a range of different contracts providing funding to the, this central charity on behalf of the, of the three. So that there is total core funding from all of the councils put together of just over seven hundred thousand pounds, of which just under three hundred thousand pounds comes from the county council. I think a key point is, is to underline the, the extent of leveraging that this allows. So that, that total amount of funding, because it provides the core funding for Citizens Advice in the, in the county, that allows Citizens Advice then to, to have the infrastructure to go out and secure additional funding from other sources, funding which is normally restricted to the delivery of specific projects. But to give that sense of scale, the seven hundred, or, or seven hundred thousand or so funding that the, the councils collectively provide enables Citizens Advice to generate something like one point nine million through additional funding. So there's almost a three to one gearing ratio. So as, as councillor Woolley identified, that there's been a, a review of the, the situation undertaken recently. We've looked at the contractual arrangements, we've looked at the performance arrangements in order to identify the best way forward. I think it's clear that generally the services across the county are performing well, something in the region of thirteen thousand calls received during the course of the year. A definite increase in the number of, of calls that have been received, but equally a growth in the number of calls that are being dealt with at the point of, at the point of contact. Your note from the Equities Impact Assessment, that just over half of the people who access the service are either disabled or have a long term health condition and a substantial proportion are over the age of sixty five. So it's reaching out some of the, the key communities across the county. And it's clear that it's having a, a positive impact on their experience of life and therefore of the, the experience of life across the county in terms of people's debt position, their call for other statutory services such as adult, adult social care and the impact on the wider, wider community resilience. So we've looked at what the way forward might be, looked at a range of, of options and including the potential of simplifying the situation. I think the, the conclusion has been that taking one step at a time is, is most appropriate. So suggesting a, that the, the county council continues to provide its grant to, to the, the overarching charity, while the districts will continue to fund their individual local, local charities. However, there will be a standardised performance reporting framework, which will be monitored closely by the, the, the contracts team here in the county council, working very closely with the teams in the, in the district councils. And, and one of the things that we're looking at through that is the extent to which we can obtain performance data in, on footprints that are meaningful for county councillors, as well as those that are meaningful for colleagues in districts. So we think that in addition, this recommendation is, as councillor Woolley has said, a three year contract gives significant greater certainty to, to Citizens Advice. That will help us to develop and build upon the performance reporting. It will give them greater certainty on which to then base bids for funding from other providers. But it does build in, the contract does build in a fair amount of flexibility so that should the position change, the county council isn't, isn't locked into an arrangement for the next three years that we, that we couldn't adjust. And a key, key element of this, I think, would be to note that in contrast to previous situation, the contract is, the suggestions, the grant is uprated by the increase in the national living wage, which does tend to be higher than the rate of RPI. But because it reflects the fact that the bulk of the core funding is spent on staff and, and staff costs tend to increase by the, the national living wage. So it's, it's an appropriate measure to, to use. And then again, finally, that the, the three year con, uh, uh, grant gives us the opportunity to, to have further conversations with colleagues in the NHS who currently don't fund Citizens Advice, but have expressed some interest that there may be scope for them to do that. And this greater period of stability and certainty gives us an opportunity to have those, those conversations. So I think that would be the, the summary of the report. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you for that. And it is a very important service, I do know, for people. Councillor Pepper, would you like to give us the scrutiny comments, please?
Well, just to say, chairman, that at the meeting of the Public Protection and Communities Scrutiny Committee on the thirty first of October, it was agreed to support the recommendation to the executive. During the discussion, support was given to the continuation of funding and the recommendation to move to a three year grant funding agreement with annual increases in line with the national living wage. Disappointment was expressed by a member of the committee about the level of funding. And this was clarified with a question from myself. However, overall, it was recommended that we should reset the clock, so to speak, and provide future funding as set out in the report, with a payment being made on a quarterly basis. And all is eloquently put by Martin. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that, councillor Pepper. The recommendations are on page forty six. Is everybody in agreement with those recommendations? Would you like to show your hands? Oh, question. Oh, sorry. Do you know what is the matter with me this morning? Questions? Come on, questions. Sorry. Wendy?
I suppose because I suggested it, I probably better. It's not really a question, but I agree that this is really needed at the moment. There's lots of people struggling out there and to get that initial help, where to go to if you're renting a house falling below with your rent or if you're ill even and you need help, I just think it is a really good service. I know they have been struggling since Covid to get volunteers and they're having to pay a lot of staff to help them. But I still think it's an excellent service and we're right to, to contribute.
Thank you for that. Very sorry. I missed that out. So yes, so recommendations. Is everybody happy with the recommendations that's here today? Thank you. I think that's the end of the, close of the meeting and thank you very much. And I apologise for not being quite on the ball this morning, but never mind. Thank you very much.